I'll call this meeting to water on Monday, August the 19th, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Tonight, we're starting the meeting a little early at 6:30 due to the fact that we had, there's a meeting at the Cobb County Civic Center concerning the toxic issue of toxic air down on Atlanta Road, which is going on at 7 o'clock. So we're hoping we can be out of here to be up at that meeting at 7. An invocation, I'm going to ask for Corky Welch to give our invocation and also lead us in the pledge to the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. We thank you for the group that has come out this evening to hear the city council and the, just the opportunity to live here in this great city. We thank you for all the people before us that have set the laws in place to make it a great city. And we just ask that you continue to bless us as we move forward. Be with each of us this evening. Give us a humble heart as we make these decisions. Bless over us, watch us, keep us, and protect us as we travel this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Corky. And tonight, we were to have Pastor Carolyn Vincent of the High Point Christian Tabernacle, which is at 3269 O'Concorde. And I'm afraid that message didn't get out to her that we were going to be starting at 6:30. So, High Point Christian Tabernacle over on O'Concorde Road, I'm sure if you're looking for a new church, they'd love to have you stop by if you just want to just change. Agenda changes, we only have one agenda change. That is 6C, under formal business. Nope, 6B. Is that right? 6B. That will be tabled until 9/16, once we get to it. Under the mayor's report, I just want to mention that tomorrow begins a three-day qualifying period for any folks that want to run for city council or the mayor's position. All positions are open. Qualifying begins at 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. There'll be a one-hour lunch break from 12 to 1. The mayor's salary is $22,500 a year, which is, that dictates the amount of money that you have to pay to qualify, which is $756. Qualifying fee for all seven council seats, council members make $18,500 a year. Qualifying fee is $567, and that's based on state law. Qualifying will be held in the human resources training room, come into city hall and hang a lift. And again, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30 with an hour for lunch from 12 to 1. You can also visit our website, Smyrna City Government, City Clerk, election information and qualifying. So anybody that would like to run, please give us a good check or cash or money order and you meet the qualifying periods. So be it. Item 4 is land issues, annexes only, and annexation. A 2019-245 is approval of ordinance 2019-15, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation, all tract of land lying and being in land lot 632, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of .16 acre tract, being known as 1693 Donnellin Drive, southeast Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Effective date would be September 1st, 2019, and part of Ward 3. I think this is pretty much self-explanatory, Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir.
This is a request by the owner. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Blackman for her to make the motion to annex this property.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm always excited when we have the opportunity to annex our neighbors into the city. So with that said, I am going to move for approval of item A 2019-245, approval of ordinance 2019-15, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation, all tract of land lying and being in land lot 632, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of .16 acre tract, being known as 1693 Donnellin Drive, southeast Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Effective date, September 1st, 2019, and part of Ward 3.
Motion second to approve this annexation request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Item B 2019-282, approval of ordinance 2019-16, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying and being in land lot 519, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, 1221 Pierce Avenue, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Effective date, September 1st, 2019. It becomes a part of Ward 3. Nothing unusual about this, 100% request. I'll turn this over to Ms. Blackman, who's, this property lies in her district. Ms. Black?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, very excited that we have more neighborhoods that want to be part of our wonderful city. So with that, I am going to move for approval of item 4B 2019-282, approval of ordinance 2019-16, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying and being in land lot 519, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, 1221 Pierce Avenue, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Effective date, September the 1st, 2019, and that's part of Ward 3.
Second. Motion second to approve this annexation request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have nothing. Item 6 is formal business. A 2019-265, award RFP 19-024, architectural design services, community center phase two, to most responsive and responsible proposal, Foley Design, 950 Lowry Boulevard, northwest-south suite 21, Atlanta, Georgia, 30318, for $45,000. Funded through the 2019 CDBG and authorized the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Tammy Sadler-Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The city of Smyrna requested qualifications and cost proposals from firms for design and construction administration services for the renovation of the current main-level men's and women's locker room, restrooms, and shower rooms located at the community center. Nine firms submitted proposals, and they were evaluated and ranked by the Parks and Recreation and Purchasing staff. It is the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation and Purchasing manager that this RFP be awarded to the most responsive and responsible proposal, Foley Design, in the amount of $45,000. This project will be funded by the Community Development Block Grant.
At this time, I want to make a motion to approve for item 6A 2019-265 to award the RFP to, for the architectural design services for the community center lower restrooms to the most responsible and responsive lowest bidder. Everything that I, all the research that I've done in looking into this item and in terms of the rules and regulations for the federal program for the Community Development Block Grant calls for the sealed bid process to go to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder. And I've looked under all the documents and even the documents that are referred to with the city of Smyrna in the, what went out for the request for that proposal, and even the city's documents say it should go, if you look on the page three, it should go to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And that would be, that would be Fitzgerald Collaborative Group LLC would be the lowest bidder. And they are also a minority firm, and the spirit and intent of the CDGB funds does talk a lot about awarding those to the minority companies. And also, in addition, the, the information that we got back and the scoring, they were only one point lower than Foley Design Group and which, and also the feedback I got from the staff was that with the nine firms that submitted proposals, only one did not submit the documents, all the documentation that was required. So that would mean, in the communication that I got, was that all seven of the other bids were responsible and responsive. So at this time, I...
I totally missed, who are you saying you want to award the bid to?
The Fitzgerald Collaborative Group LLC.
Not Foley Design?
No, I'm making the motion to award it to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Fitzgerald Collaborative Group, for $15,744. I was told that they were all, they were all responsive and responsible, and all the documentation that I can find under the CDBG rules and guidelines for where this federal program say that the, that the contract must be made by written notice to the responsible bidder whose bid conforming to the invitation for bids is lowest. That's in this documentation under the CID Build section, 14 dot 1 dot 2. And that's the section that, that the city went through the sealed bid process.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to be clear, I'm going to remove my second motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to follow staff recommendation and hereby move approval of the motion before us.
Hold on, let me make sure that I'm doing this right. We've got a motion.
Yeah, we've got, so right now, you've got a motion and a second.
Nope, but he withdrew.
And the second wants to withdraw, so you'd first have to file and make a motion to withdraw your second. It would have to get a second, then you have to vote on that.
I move to withdraw my second motion.
Second, Mr. Welch, have a motion second to withdraw Mr. Gu's second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's to withdraw the second.
Aye.
No.
Is that right?
So now, what's the next step?
We've got to get a vote. Are we going to be able to get it? Back in the old days, before we had technology, I would have asked you to raise your hands and count them. And we got a motion by Tim Gu, second about Corky Welch. All those in favor of the motion? Withdraw the second. Tim withdrew, that's correct.
So now, what you've got is, you've got Ms. Wilkinson's motion on the table, waiting for a second.
But we got to vote on the withdrawal, right?
Right, after they...
Okay, all right, so it's up, everybody please vote. So the motion to approve, that's approved 7-0. Motion passes for him to withdraw. So now, Ms. Wilkinson, your motion is to award it to somebody that, I just wish we had a meeting prior to this, that it was not even mentioned that you did not want to go with staff's recommendation. And so your motion is to give the bid to who?
The lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
And that's who?
That would be Fitzgerald LLC.
All right, we got a motion.
Who scored 88?
Motion second to award this to, and this is not staff's recommendation, that's correct?
It is not staff's recommendation, but I did want to mention, Mayor, that we received a letter from the Cobb County CDBG office confirming that the city was in compliance with HUD and CDBG's procurement process and that they approved staff's recommendation for Foley to be selected for the work for the community center.
Mr. Mayor, is this time to introduce, entertain a substitute motion?
Well, no, I think we go ahead and, I think let's vote on this. It's, it's very unusual for us to be sitting here voting on something that we didn't discuss in our pre-agenda meeting, never even came up, that there was someone other than who staff had recommended. I say we vote on it, I mean, I'm confident with staff, so we got a motion and a second to award this to Fitzgerald or whoever it is. Motion second, all those in favor of the motion. There's five nays and two yays. So the nays, that motion does not pass, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2019-285, as previously recommended by staff.
Motion second to approve what was recommended by staff, which is, excuse me, which is Foley. Any discussion?
I think you said 285, didn't you mean 265, Ron?
What, 265, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved 5 to 2. Ms. Blackman, Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item B, which is 2019-264, abandonment of alleyway behind 1529, 1539 Roswell Street, and authorized the mayor to execute all necessary documents to convey the alleyway to the adjacent property owners, owners at such address. This is going to be tabled till 9/16/19. Ms. Blackman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move that we, for approval, to table item B 2019-264, to abandon, abandon an alleyway behind 1529 and 1539 Roswell Street, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents to convey the alleyway to the adjacent property owners in such address until September 16th.
Second.
Motion second, table, all those in favor of the motion. Approved 7-0, table till 9/16/19. Item C 2019-284, approval of professional service agreements with GHD Services, Inc., doing business as GHD Environmental and Consulting, Inc., 11719 Henson Road, Suite 100, Little Rock, Arkansas, 72212, between the city of Smyrna, Cobb County, and it says possibly the city of Atlanta, but I think that's, we can change that to the city of Atlanta.
That's correct.
With the estimated contribution from the city being $39,600 for industrial hygiene risk management services, hazard assessment, and ambient air sampling. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, I think you pretty much said it all. I just wanted to mention that our city's purchasing policy allows procurement of professional services without competitive bid. That's why we are able to go with GHD. Also, state law recognizes that anyone who is a professional engineer or possesses a certified industrial hygienist license is considered a professional service. Dyrin Hamlin with GHD holds both of these certifications. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the professional services agreement with GHD with the city of Smyrna's estimated contribution being $39,600.
Mr. Gu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I move to approve item 2019-284, approval of professional service agreements with GHD Services and Environmental and Consulting Incorporated between city of Smyrna, Cobb County, and the city of Atlanta, with the estimated contribution from the city of Smyrna being $39,600 for industrial hygiene, risk assessment, services, hazard assessment, and ambient air sampling.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? I know that Cobb County has approved their funding, city of Atlanta, and I believe that the Cobb County School Board, hopefully they will become a partner in this, and that would reduce that cost of the $39,600, $39,600 even less. I think this is a good move for us. We've gotten this thing, this is starting pretty quick, so glad to see this happen. Oh, you already voted on it. It already passed 7-0, huh? Good deal. Approved 7-0. Item D 2019-269, approval to purchase a 2020 Kenworth T370 Pac-Mac knuckle boom loader through the state of Georgia, contract number 99999-SP0000155-002, to MHC Kenworth, Atlanta, 5860 Riverview Road, Mableton, 30126, funded in the 2019 vehicle replacement fund for the total cost of $148,930. Anything you need to add to that?
No, sir.
Mr. Corky Welch, if you'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6D 2019-269 for the approval of the purchase of a 2020 Kenworth T370 Pac-Man knuckle boom loader from MHC Kenworth, Atlanta, 5860 Riverview Road, to be funded in the FY 2020 vehicle replacement fund for a cost of $148,930.
Oh, second, aye. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved. It's taking a little, little longer. Approved 6-0. Who didn't vote?
What?
Somebody didn't vote.
I voted and it popped off.
That's approved 7-0. Item E is 2019-271, approval to purchase a 2019 Mac TE64R chassis sanitation truck through Sourceful Cooperative Heal Contract, number THC112014, to Carolyn Environmental Services, Inc., 500 Lee Industrial Boulevard, Ostel, Georgia, 30168, funded in the FY 20 vehicle replacement fund for a total cost of $230,529. Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2019 TE64R chassis sanitation truck, award to purchase to Carolina Environmental Systems of Ostel, Georgia, to be funded in the FY 20 vehicle replacement fund, in the total cost of $230,529.
Motion second. Frank, this is a 2019, right? And the other ones are 2020, so which, it's correct, right? Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved 7-0. Item F 2019-281, approval to purchase a 2019 Ford F750 chassis and Monroe spreader and Boss 9 nine-foot plow, using the Georgia State Contract Number 9999-01 SPD0000155 from Wade Ford, located at 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, for a total cost of $103,431, funded in FY 20 vehicle replacement fund. Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6F, item 2019-281, for the approval of a purchase of a 2019 F750 chassis and Monroe spreader and Boss nine-foot plow from Wade Ford, located at 3860 South Cobb Drive, in the amount of $103,431 to be funded from the FY 20 vehicle replacement fund.
Have a motion. Just so, if we didn't approve this, we'd have a big snowstorm, for sure, and nobody could get out of Smyrna, so. $103,431. We got a motion second, all those in favor of the motion? 7-0, approved 7-0. Approval of extended work hours for Alford Beatty during concrete pours at the new King Springs Elementary School at 1041 Reed Road. Proposed working hours are from 3:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during five concrete pours in the upcoming weeks. The dates are 9/16, 10/14, 10/25, 11/15, and 11/18. You want to say anything with that, or you just want to go with the flow?
I'll go with the flow.
Yeah. I'm going to turn this over to Corky Welch, just in his district, and we need to, this is what the school board's recommending or requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make a motion on this item, let me, let me just say for the, for the people that are listening out there, I realize as much as anybody that this is a long date for, for concrete trucks to be entering into your neighborhood at 3 o'clock in the morning. And it's, it's schools in session and everything else, but being in and around the construction business, this is a necessary evil to allow this, this school to be built. They have concrete pours, and to be able to put the concrete on the ground and to, to finish it within the timeframe that's allowed, this is something that they need to do. I'll say this, if it wakes you up at 3 o'clock in the morning, come knock on my door and I'll give you coffee. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, a motion for item 6G 2019-283, approval of extended work hours for Alford Beatty during the concrete pours at New King Springs Elementary School, 1041 Reed Road. Proposed working hours are from 3:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during five consecutive concrete pours in the upcoming weeks. And this is one day during that week of 9/16, 10/4, 10/25, 11/15, and 11/18.
Have a motion. I have a second. I'll just say, the key thing is, we need to get, and I mentioned this earlier in our pre-meeting, need to get the message out to the citizens that live in that area, and it's not so much the noise from the pour as it is the bell ringing. It's going to drive people crazy, so if we, I'm sure that we'll have somebody out there from the city... from the city monitoring it and making sure that that noise is down to the least amount. All right, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved seven zero. Item H, 2019 dash 285, is approval of a consulting contract with the Center for State and Local Finance at Georgia State University, 14 Mariana Street, Northwest, Fourth Floor, Atlanta, Georgia, 30303, for an annexation feasibility study in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. I'm gonna let you slide tonight, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve item 6H, 2019 dash 285, approval of a consulting contract with the Center for State and Local Finance at Georgia State University for an annexation feasibility study in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion second to approve this contract with these folks for forty-five thousand dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved seven zero. Item I, 2019 dash 280, is approval of a consulting contract with Pond, P-O-N-D, 3500 Parkway Lane, Suite 500, Peachtree Corner, Georgia, to conduct a downtown master plan update for the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Fennel.
Mr. Mayor, this is a continuation of our look at how we improve with the downtown master plan annexation and update, and I move approval of 2019 dash 280 in an amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine fifty.
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved six to zero, and Ms. Wilkinson votes in the negative. Item seven is commercial building permits. Eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones?
Sally Jones.
Ms. Tammy Sally Jones, mother of Leland.
Yes, thank you. Consent agenda. Item A, approval of the August 5th, 2019 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August 5th, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. And item C, approval of the August 1st, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Here most to approve the consent agenda. You know, it could have been finished if we would have got that second in every one of these little quirkery. All those in favor of the motion? Approved seven zero. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight, Mr. Derek Norton.
No report, Your Honor.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Report, Your Honor.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
I just want to say thank you to Sean Martin, the Tree Board, and all the community that came out and supported them on Saturday for the tree bombing, as they call it, with the scarves on the trees. It is absolutely beautiful. I had an opportunity to drive by earlier today, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, and I understand that our Amnesty Bulk Day was a very big success, so once again, thank you to the community for coming out and supporting the efforts of our city in terms of sustainability. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I have no report this evening.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Hi, I have two announcements. One of them is a housing fair that's taking place at the Smyrna Community Center on Saturday, August 24th, 2019, from 1:00 to 4:00, and there's gonna be vendors there, thirty-something, I think, thirty-eight vendors, to help people with resources on the first time home buying or other things as well, existing homeowners, renters for current prospective Smyrna residents, and there's gonna be realtors there, HOAs, financial institutions, homeowner services, and property managers, and first time home buyer seminars. I'd also like to make an announcement for Mary Moore at the library, and this is Smyrna Library Academy, and Smyrna Library has launched a lifetime learning academy for adults. The inaugural class this autumn is a course on creative writing taught by critically acclaimed novelist Amber Brock. The course is four weeks and covers character, setting, plot, and editing. The course is seventy-five dollars and includes twelve hours of instruction, handouts for writing exercises, and refreshments, and you can visit the smyrnallibrary.com to learn more. Also, I want to add that Ms. Amber Brock was my daughter's high school language arts teacher, and so that's kind of cool, too. I knew that she was writing novels, and I think it's neat that we're having her, featuring her at our library. With that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Goode.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Scott Cochran, Mr. Scott Andrews, Terry Graham, I know, has something in...
Is this on? Yes. Okay. I just want to announce that the qualifying, the municipal qualifying period this year is determined by OCGA 21 dash 2 dash 132. This takes place between Monday, August the 19th, and Friday, August the 23rd. Within that week, a municipality must designate no less than three consecutive days in which to conduct qualifying. The hours each day are 8:30 to 4:30 PM with a one-hour lunch break. Qualifying fees were set at the January 7th, 2019 city council meeting. Qualifying fee for mayor is seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Qualifying fee for council member, wards one through seven, is five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Qualifying will be held in the human resources training room on the first floor of Smyrna City Hall, 2800 King Street, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, as follows. Tuesday, August the 20th, 8:30 to 4:30. Wednesday, August the 21st, 8:30 to 4:30. And Thursday, August the 22nd, 8:30 to 4:30. Each day, the qualifying process will close for lunch from 12 to 1:00. You can also visit our Smyrna website at www.smyrnacity.gov, your government, city clerk, court, election information, qualifying. Thank you.
Tina, you have anything? Thank you. We have one person, we do not have a show call hearing, have one person to sign up for citizens input. Suze Kaprich, kaprich@gmail.com, introduction is her, so you have the floor for three minutes.
I want to give the full benefit to the viewers, and could you repeat your name so that people can hear you?
Darn, it was so good the first time. My name is Suze Kaprich.
Say again.
Suze, S-U-Z, and my last name is K-A-P-R-I-C-H.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I intend to qualify for Ward Five. I'm a nurse executive. I work for a healthcare system here in town. I have been a nurse my entire career, a mother of two. I am really excited about participating in a more meaningful way with our government, and feel that I can bring organization, and I can help to improve, you know, just our community, and I'm really excited to work with folks to figure that out. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. That was the only person that signed up for citizens input. There's no other business. I missed it by eighteen minutes. I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:08.